Joint meeting of Lewis and City Council on Planning and Zoning Commission. Joint meeting agenda, building, second floor, April 24, 2024, 5:41 as advertised. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council and the commission on agenda items. There are other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council and the commission. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational decisions in advance with the mayor and the commission in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please let me to remarks for three minutes. And we have a couple of members of the public here. Would you like to provide any comments? Oh, well, welcome. It's great to have you say hello to Dr. Lawson and Dr. Britzman.
I have an email. It's from Noah Prescott, and it says, in short, I support the new comprehensive plan proposal and would like to see these changes with as little changes as possible. I believe it is exactly what Lewiston needs in order to become the best city it can possibly be, and would love for other cities in the surrounding area to follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen, thank you.
Before we move on to room number four, who's our chairman of planning and zoning right now?
Cindy.
Cynthia. Would you like to share some words of wisdom with the council or the commission before we get started?
I guess my words of wisdom are to thank the city, all the individuals who participated in the various meetings to continue to try to push our city into its version of itself.
With that, we'll move to room number four, discussion items about envision Lewiston 2044, Lewiston's draft comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a community and formal land use plan required by the state that offers guidance for decision makers to best accommodate the challenges and opportunities associated with growth and quality of life. The plan considers many facets of the community, including but not limited to land use, jobs, housing, transportation, recreation, community design, well-being, resiliency, and more. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our city planner, Joel Plastgon, because I'm not quite sure what order you'd like to go on this, Joel, but you could please introduce yourself for record. And if we have folks listening at home, we need to remember to speak up loudly and clearly. We have microphones above us, I think it's the small round ones, so there's three of them in this room, so Joel.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Joel Plastgon, Lewiston City Planner. This joint meeting of the City Council on Planning and Zoning Commission is to get a presentation from a consultant on a rewrite of the city's comprehensive plan. The city's, it was described pretty well in the agenda description, but it's our long-range plan for future growth. It's a 20-year plan. Council budgeted money for this project in 2021 or 2022. We started the project in January of last year. We're heading into the homestretch shortly. There's a very thorough presentation that's going to be given by Joe Moss from Logan Simpson, and I hope that you have had a chance to review the draft. It's been available online now since early April, and it's going to be available for public comment through the end of the month. What's in there is based on thousands of touches from the public since we started the project, based on public outreach and engagement that we've done, and the work of a steering committee representing a very broad spectrum of the community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe.
All right, thank you, Joel. Let me try to share my screen here. Let me know if you're all able to see the presentation.
Yep.
Great, okay, well, welcome, everybody. As Joel said, you know, we're here to talk comprehensive plan.
Joel, you're gonna have to speak a little bit louder, or if we have somebody behind the curtain, we're gonna have to ask him to somehow turn the volume up for those of us that can't hear.
Okay. Is that better? Are we still getting the?
No, no. We have folks in the room that need to hear.
Are you?
Yeah, it's better.
It's a little better.
It's a little better, yeah.
Is it a reverberation, or is it just my mic not picking it up?
No, I think that's better.
That's better.
It's better.
Okay, I'll make sure I speak up here.
Thank you.
All right, well, as Joel said, this has been a long process. We've been working on this since January of last year, and so we're gonna be giving you an overview of the project, what we've done to date, and then we'll walk you through the draft plan document before getting into some questions and talking about where we're headed next. So, welcome, I appreciate everybody taking time out of their day to talk with us. This project, as was mentioned, is something that's part of Idaho's requirements for cities to have that current comprehensive plan. The last one was updated, or was adopted in 99, and it has been updated over time, but it was only intended to last about 20 years, and so it was time to get an update. So, in this process here, this is how we structured the project. Phase one is really, it was really about listening and doing some base research. So it was about gathering data and information, but really also listening to the community. We had some community outreach events to find out, you know, what do people want for the future of Lewiston? The next phase got us into kind of analyzing those comments and saying, okay, well, people want X, Y, and Z. How do we form a vision based on the things that people are saying they want for the future of the community? And then, after that has been developed more fully, we got into the third phase here where we're drafting the plan, and now we have this draft plan out, and it's been available for comment. So, just an overview of some of those public engagement processes. We did a number of in-person events last year. We were at the Art Under the Elms Festival there, campus, talking to people. There were pop-up events at farmers' markets. We had a couple of different events at the library to talk to people as well. In addition to that, we had online questionnaires that we got thousands of responses from, so that was a great effort. And we've also maintained a project webpage, and we've been working with the city to regularly update the social media to keep the public informed about this project. We have also sent out information in newsletters and magazine articles, as well as email messages and out to interested folks. And then, as Joel mentioned, we have a really broad steering committee representing a lot of different community groups in the city, outside of the city, as well as just getting a lot of diverse perspectives on that committee, and they've been really instrumental in guiding this process. So now we are currently in phase three. That first part of the phase was really about actually compiling the draft and getting the documents together. We've had a couple of steering committee meetings to kind of drill down further into getting that document into something that is really reflective of what we want for Lewiston. And then, currently, as Joel mentioned, it is in the public review phase. We've had this open for the public for a couple of weeks now, and so far, the planned draft has been viewed about 850 times, and we've gotten comments from a number of folks on the draft, which are usually mostly technical in nature, but some people have been really encouraging, which is great to hear from the public on that, as well as, we've had another steering committee meeting just last week to get some further input on, you know, direction on our final draft. So, we're here tonight talking to you on this meeting to get a little bit more direction on where we need to maybe fine-tune on this draft before it heads into the adoption phase. So, any questions about the project, or kind of where that was at, that process, kind of how we got to where we are today, before we move into the actual draft?
Counselor, we do have a question. Joel, Counselor Forsman?
The dates that you have on this slide, like tentative, or are they, we're hoping to aim for the, those dates for them?
Yeah, these are dates that we've been targeting on our schedule. You know, obviously, if the commission, you know, if something happens at Planning Commission for some reason or another, you know, they might need another meeting or something, but this is our tentative outline of the adoption schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
This will look like it, Joel.
All right, well, we'll get into the plan then. So the plan itself is organized into 11 different chapters. So there's kind of an introduction there at the beginning, and then it talks about the community vision that, you know, we developed with all of the public comments and input that we had. And then after that, it gets into eight different kind of components of the plan, so talking all different angles. So we're looking at, you know, housing, economics, and parks and recreation, you know, so we're looking at really a wide variety of topics here. And I'll show you why it's kind of organized like this in the next slide, but the final chapter is also the implementation chapter. So it's talking about how we take all of these great ideas that are in the plan, and how do we get to, you know, putting those into action to getting them realized in the future here. So as I mentioned, one of the reasons that plan is structured that way is Idaho has a number of different requirements for comprehensive plans. And so, you can see in the column here on the left, you've got the different kinds of requirements from the state, and then the location of where those are in the plan. The only one that's not addressed in the plan is those national interest electric transmission corridors, and that's simply because there is none in Lewiston. So, we've tried to make sure we are fully in compliance with those requirements, and this is kind of how the relationship between that organizational structure and state requirements looks. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we did have a really big community engagement process. You know, we got thousands of comments from questionnaires, and we've had in-person meetings, you know, community interviews with people. We have had a lot of steering committee members representing those different groups, as well as a number of these meetings with the commission's council. So, we've tried to really make sure that we have been working with as many people as possible all the way through the process. And that led us to forming this vision for the community. Now, this is meant to be sort of the guiding beacon, so you know, it's kind of the lighthouse, if you will, of the plan. Everything in it is sort of to support this statement to, you know, what Lewiston would like to be in the future. And so, what the community vision is in the draft plan is, Lewiston is a prosperous waterfront city with a strong sense of community and small-town feel. Our thriving historic downtown, resilient and diverse economy, and collaborative community offer everyone a high quality of life. And those are really reflective of the comments that we heard from a lot of people, you know, over and over and over again. There was definitely things that kind of rose to the top as what were key priorities for the community, and so we've tried to capture those in that statement. It's a little long, but we do think that it kind of comes to hit all of the points that folks wanted to make sure we included. And then, that gets into themes. So, you know, you have this vision up here, and that breaks it down into three different themes that kind of help support this vision. So this plan is organized with these three different themes in mind. So the first one is focused around economic resilience and diversification, that Lewiston prospers as a regional economic hub. The second one is collaboration and investment, that Lewiston makes strategic investments while building community trust and connections. And then the third is high quality of life, that Lewiston provides a high-quality life for its people. And again, these are sort of components of that vision statement, and how we have kind of organized our goals and objectives around these different themes to help achieve that full vision process. So, as you can see here, we've used these kinds of icons in the plan. Now, these are sort of related to health, but these different colors here, these three colors, talk about those themes. So you'll see those different colors represent those themes throughout the plan. But there is also a significant health integration in this, in this plan. As Joel mentioned, part of this plan is funded with a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Idaho, and so that meant we were looking at having, you know, health be an element in this plan that is prominent. I mean, a good plan should always incorporate health. I mean, it's one of the key reasons planning exists in the first place, is to ensure public health. But we are also really cognizant of trying to integrate all of the different things we learned about the community and how we can improve health in the future. And so, we have done that through these dimensions of health and well-being, there are seven of them, and so, you know, emotional, intellectual, spiritual, physical, social, housing, economic, and environmental. And these icons kind of will break it down in each of those goals and objectives and tell you kind of which ones those correspond with. In addition to that sort of key structure that's in the goals and objectives, each chapter has kind of a call-out of health and well-being considerations, and it's a, you know, specific section within that chapter that calls out whatever the key information on that particular topic is when it comes to health. There's also a special section for the waterfront. Currently, the plan, the current comprehensive plan has a pretty significant waterfront element, and we didn't want to get rid of that in the new plan, so we brought forward those waterfront components. We tried to streamline it a little bit to fit into the document a little cleaner, so we've gone from seven different sub-areas down to four here, but it's still, I would say the goals and overall strategy of that existing waterfront plan have been carried forward just in a little bit more compact form. and overall strategy of that existing waterfront plan have been carried forward just in a little bit more compact form. The land use chapter has a couple of things going on that are going to be new. One of those is this land use matrix. So we have different land use categories that we use in the plan, and that's how the future land use map is mapped out. And then we've put together this matrix of different uses and different, to kind of give you a sense of what goes inside each category. So for instance, you know, neighborhood commercial, we're looking, we're not necessarily looking for agriculture or, you know, the detached residential product. But we are looking at these primary uses here, which, you know, more retail, restaurant, personal service, office. The gray dots indicate secondary uses. So they, they might support those primary uses, but they're not necessarily the reason that that zone exists. So and then in this table on the right-hand side, we have kind of a description of what each of those different categories are. So, you know, what does, you know, residential detached mean? Well, that can mean like a single-family dwelling or a single-family dwelling with an accessory dwelling unit. So that's kind of what we're talking about there. And how that shows up in the plan, there's a bigger description of each of these land use categories. And then those are all represented on the map here. So this is a snip of the community commercial land use category. And it has a number of different components here. So the image is just kind of a little thumbnail showing you where on the map that particular category appears. So it kind of focuses it in so you can see, you know, where in the city that's going to affect. And then you have a description at the top which talks about kind of what this, this category is. It gives you some examples of, you know, things that might fit into that category. So, you know, office or storage facilities, technology, and software firms, grocery stores, supermarkets, these kinds of things all can fit into this as a, as a kind of example of what that might look like. And then it has a number of different things here when it comes to density ranges. Because if you notice on that matrix, almost all of these districts, I would say, are mixed use in some, some way or another. They're not all exclusively residential, they're not all exclusively commercial. So we're trying to give some guidance as to where residential uses in this particular category might be appropriate and what that could look like. And so this category down here, policy basis, this is referring to the specific goals and objectives in the plan that are related to this particular land use category. So these, these are, well, these are all related to different goals and objectives. So this one is, you know, community, community character goal three is directly related to this particular place type. And then down here at the bottom, we have that matrix again, so you can see which of those categories this particular land use category fits into. And then obviously, these kind of all get compiled, all those different land use categories get compiled on this map here. And so there are a couple of different things to point out. So you have your, your area of impact outside of city limits. That one is kept pretty simple with just basically a residential, a primarily residential versus a primarily non-residential discretion. And then within city limits, there's a lot more sort of nuance. And you can see there's a, there's a couple of key spots in town that are not, that are in this blue, that is a special use. So, you know, you have like the fairgrounds, the airport, cemetery, the hospital campus, the port. So those are kind of key areas that don't necessarily fit neatly into one of those other categories. They're kind of their own thing. This does also cover transportation. So it talks in the plan about different strategies for, you know, the roadways, the the airport, for instance. And the airport's actually kind of an interesting component to this. The airport plan in the existing plan is actually fairly new, it's only a few years old. And because Idaho has some pretty strict requirements about what is sort of required in that, we wanted to make sure we kept most of the substance there. So there's actually an airport appendix in this plan that maintains a lot of that sort of technical information. And then this is just giving you kind of an overview of what, what is in that particular section. But the transportation section as a whole does cover things like, you know, roadways. It does talk about the port, you know, waterways, as well as transportation, like buses, microtransit, those sorts of things. The economic development and housing chapters, they give you kind of an overview of some of the high-level big takeaways from the existing conditions report, which is another appendix to this plan, which has a lot more extensive research than, you know, if you wanted to, you know, find out more about a specific item, you can pull the existing conditions report and find out that more data-centric description. But we've tried to keep it pretty concise in the actual plan here. So we give you kind of an overview with the context and then, you know, get into those goals and objectives in the, in the plan. So both the, the housing and economic development are pretty similarly structured that way. So you can see that, you know, there's some baseline data from what we've learned. And then, you know, obviously, we have those health and wellbeing considerations being called out specifically as well. I will say it's a pretty similar story here when it comes to parks and recreation and natural hazards and resources chapters. You know, you have the overview of the different components. So for parks and recreation, you know, there's the parks and trails and open space components. And then in natural hazards, there's a number of different things we talk about, you know, view corridors, groundwater, renewable energy, the urban tree canopy. So there's a lot of different elements being discussed here. But we've, again, tried to keep it as concise as possible, so it's still a readable document that's going to kind of tell the story about where we want to go as, as a city in the future. And then there's also this public services, facilities, and utilities chapter. This one covers city services, so things like water, sewer, as well as other services that are available in the city, like schools, healthcare. So, you know, just giving an overview of kind of what's available in the city and how, you know, future growth might affect these particular services. This is an interesting map, too, that I will point out. This is a, an excerpt from our health conditions assessment, which is in another appendix to this plan. Again, because there was a significant health focus in this particular plan, we, there, there was a health conditions assessment that was put together for it. And it outlines different data points for the city based off of census tract. So there's about thirty-five different criteria that those census tracts were scored on, you know. And then this was compiled, and this is kind of the overall map of kind of areas of the city that were doing better or worse based off of those scoring criteria. So again, that health conditions assessment is another appendix to this plan. So you can read it in its full sense, but we've tried to, to give you the, give you the most important details upfront here in this section of the plan. So you, you can get the story from the plan as well. And then the last chapter is an implementation chapter. This is actually quite an important one. And it helps give you a view of kind of where we're headed with, you know, how we want to put this together. So it talks about plan, plan management, how we're going to make amendments to the plan, you know, if things change in the future. It also gives you some decision-making criteria here. So, you know, one of this, one of the goals of this plan is to give decision-makers and, you know, as many tools to make good decisions that are going to be consistent with the vision as possible. And so some of these things are, you know, included in the decision-making criteria. You know, like compatibility with the future land use map, those future, you know, is it meeting the themes and goals and objectives of the plan? Is it demonstrating that, you know, it can meet the planned infrastructure for these areas or, you know? So there's a lot of different things in there that can help when you have a decision to make about, you know, some kind of proposal somebody brings across to the commission or the council. As well as, the other component of this is an action plan. So the full action plan is appendix A. And it breaks down each goal and objective with a number of actions that are recommended. And each of those actions are assigned a type, priority, timeline, and cost. So, you know, as far as type, it'll tell you if it's like a regulatory reform, if it's maybe another plan or study that needs to happen, if it's a program or resource, or if it's going to be a capital project that the city needs to look at completing in the future. Priority gives a sense of kind of if it's a low, medium, or high. Some of this is based off of things like, you know, hey, is it, is this something we've been working on for a while? And we have to get this done before other things can happen? You know, there's, there's a number of factors that can go into that, but it's, it's basically meant to say that, you know, hey, we need to strike while the iron's hot on this one, or this is really important in order for other things to happen. Or there's a little bit more flexibility. So again, giving you guys an additional tool as to prioritization. And then implementation timeline, giving an idea of how long, you know, some of these action items should take, as well as anticipated cost. So, you know, it's always kind of hard to ballpark some things. But, you know, is this something that's going to be, you know, less than twenty thousand dollars? That's going to be fairly low budget in, in the long term? Or, you know, is this a capital project that's going to cost a lot of money in order to, to complete? So we've tried to give a sense of kind of what that looks like in the action plan. And here's what that looks like in practice. So you have a goal here in green, and then underneath it is an objective in the gray. But then the action plan is, is here in white. And you get the, you know, the type, the priority, timeline, and anticipated cost. These abbreviations here, so this is LU, so that corresponds to the land use chapter. So community character is CC, you know, the transportation and connectivity is TC. So we've tried to, to kind of relate those back to those chapters pretty easily and intuitively that way. And then they're numbered in this structure, so each of the objectives, or each of the goals, you know, is the first number, the objective is the second number, and then the third number is the number of the action. So in that appendancy, I think there's about eighty-five different actions under all of the, the goals and objectives that are recommended in this plan. But in addition to that appendix, that's, I think the action plan is probably the most important appendix. But as I mentioned, there's a couple of other ones, the existing conditions report, the health conditions assessment, and the airport plan. And then in addition to those, there's also a public engagement summary of all of the different things we heard during phase one and phase two from the public that helped formulate this plan. So those documents are all part of the public draft that are available online as well. And so we've, we've, we're, we're planning on making sure that these all get into the plan so nothing gets missed. I feel like I've been talking a lot. Are there questions? Are there questions about how the plan's organized, what's structured, what's in it?
I had a quick question about the area of impact. And I guess how we can use this document to plan in that area and/or to, what kind of authority, I guess it has, legal authority outside the actual city limits in terms of planning and?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a good question. Yeah, so zoning is, you know, one of the best tools the city has in order to help enforce this kind of future land use map. You know, that's, that's a tool, it's going to be different than the future land use. This is a saying, this is our ideal scenario of what we want things to look like in the future. Zoning is a great tool to be able to do that. Now legally, you can only zone what's inside your city limits, right? So the things that are outside in the area of impact here, the primary objective with those is to coordinate growth with the county. So you have areas that you can expect to be non-residential, and you have areas that you might expect to go more residential as things grow and develop. I know this, this boundary with, you know, the area of impact has been set with the county for a number of years. And so really, it's just meant to give you an idea of the type of growth that is anticipated in those areas. And, you know, the hope is that this can be used as a tool to coordinate with the county on those kinds of land use decisions in that area.
Mayor, can I add to that?
Please. Because as Joel knows, this is getting a lot of attention these days.
It, it is. So the legislature, this last session passed a bill, becomes effective July first, that rewrote the area, what was called the area of city impact section of the local land use planning act. And it very, it very much emphasizes the new, the new bill that was passed, that cities have no actual power in the area of impact, and all we can do is make recommendations. And the heaviest part of the new legislation about the area of impact is actually geared toward preventing lawsuits between cities fighting over access to county land. Based on a lawsuit that happened in South Idaho. So it's a brand-new piece of legislation, it's not been tested yet. But it very clearly, like I said, emphasizes cities' lack of control in the area of impact.
We're going to need some students in the future to grow up and study this stuff and help us solve these problems. We've got two of them in the audience, that's great. Any other questions for Joe? Counselor Forsman?
I do have a question. When we're talking about future development or areas targeted within the city that we want to change the scope or the, the vibe, so to speak. So let's talk about riverfront running down in those areas of impact. Does this plan in any way, shape, or form help the city identify ways and means and processes to move forward in acquisition or potentially changing zoning with grandfather clauses, et cetera? I mean, how do we, how do we?
Yeah.
How does a city move forward on that?
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's a great question. Yeah, because like I said, this, this map, this future land use map is not a zoning map, right? This is our, this is what we would like to happen. You know, this is, in twenty years, if all goes well, that would be what the land use map looks like, right? But we know that there's definitely some discrepancy between, first off, what's existing zoned. You know, so like, you know, some of the waterfront has some industrial zoning on it that has been identified as something that, in the, in the existing waterfront plan that, you know, has been desired to change to more commercial and recreation focuses for, for a while now. And so this plan does have, it does keep those kinds of recommendations to transition some of those areas in strategic places from those industrial uses to commercial. There's a number of different ways it does that. It does talk about, first off, on the, kind of the, the low end, you know, offering sort of incentives or resources to help sort of mitigate some of the visual impacts of those uses. You know, to help, you know, beautify some of those areas and make the waterfront more attractive. The other, you know, on the other end of the spectrum, there's the recommendation that, hey, you know, really, we ought to look at rezoning some of these areas. But then it does also provide, you know, guidance about certain areas that, you know, hey, we might say that this is a great spot for, to take. So say you have something on, you know, riverfront property here. We, we do have areas that are identified for industrial use elsewhere in the city, and this is a good spot that we would think that we could help, you know, relocate a business that might need to do so if we were trying to change the character of the specific area. And so it does have a number of recommendations when it comes to how to do that. You know, like I said, it, it spans the gamut from saying, yeah, we should help relocate a business, but also but also there's a lot in between. Um, you know, like I said, on the soft end, it can be as, as small as just helping mitigate some of the visual impacts in the short term to help those blend in better with newer commu- commercial uses that could potentially be going in. Um, but also, you know, saying, hey, we understand that this is a long-term strategy. Um, and we're going to have to create some, you know, maybe there's some incentives or some levers that we can do to help entice people to, to move. Um, or, you know, maybe there's some other kinds of resources that we can put together with a, um, you know, kind of a, a resource package saying, hey, there's all these things available to help you if you want to move to an area that's better suited for those industrial uses in the long term.
Mayor Charkis, may I add on to that?
Yes, please.
So just a couple of examples directly out of the current draft of the plan. Uh, these happen to be specific to the waterfront. Uh, one is, it says right in here, establish land use patterns along the waterfront that balance, balances commercial and industrial needs while maximizing opportunities for waterfront recreational activity. Another one is facilitate the catalyst development on the twin city food site that improves connections between downtown and the waterfront and provides additional social, recreational, and economic activity. So, um, Joe mentioned in his description of chapter 11 implementation, um, that we not only have the action plan to work up, work on to help implement these broader goals and objectives, but in addition to that, we're going to be creating after this plan is adopted. And this is the whole, planning isn't everything, and it isn't the only thing either. It's just the beginning. Because we're going to go through this plan once it's adopted, and we'll, we will have a committee or a group of people, and we'll, probably be mostly the planning and zoning commission, and we'll identify priorities, prioritizations for the different goals and objectives, and then proactively pursue those on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Well said, Joe. Are there any other questions?
Not seeing any, Joe.
All right. Well, if that's the case, um, I think I can, whoop, Roll back here. Went one too far. Sorry about that. Um, we are working currently on a, you know, final draft based off of the comments we've heard from the public so far on the existing draft, and the comments that we've heard from the, uh, steering committee, as well as, you know, anything you all have to say here, and as well as continued input from staff. So we are working on revising that plan, and that will, that final draft will go out for the planning commission in May. Um, and then, you know, city council, the first tentative hearing would hopefully be in June, and then that would get a, a resolution in July. Um, and so that's, that's the tentative timeline of kind of how that might shake out. Um, but that's the next steps for this plan. Um, unless there's any questions on those, um, that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Mayor Charkis, are you ready to move on to the next agenda item?
Please.
Rule number five, unfinished new business planning and zoning commission for comments, item D. I'll turn that over to Chairman Paul. And let her ask if the commissioners have any questions or comments.
Okay. Thoughts, commissioners? Gabe.
Uh, about this or in general?
That would be a fine question, wouldn't it? Um, since today's meeting is predominantly, I don't know that we have old business at this particular juncture. So, uh, since today's meeting's all about the comprehensive plan, what were some of the thoughts that you made or?
Sure. So, um, I, I had, was on that steering committee and was able to attend, uh, most of those meetings. So the, kind of the main takeaway, I mean, once you kind of get past the nitty-gritty details in the plan are that this is kind of, the plan is kind of the 40,000-foot view. Um, and like Joe said, it's kind of what we envision our city if everything went perfectly 100%, what we would envision our city to be. So I think my main takeaway, because also being a resident of the city, um, is that the actions that individuals, developers, builders, future counselors, future members of the commission over the 20 years are going to make that plan be a reality. So the plan by itself is not the end-all, be-all. It's how individuals, how government officials, how volunteers interact in that plan to make our city vibrant and successful. So I will just say that it was a great process to be involved with and, and interact with, and I think that that plan will change over the 20 years, depending on all the actions that we take as citizens, as members of our community here, to help our city grow and prosper. So that, that's, that was kind of my, my takeaway from it in many different ways.
Okay.
That'd be thoughts. Well, I thought that was well said, Gabe. Thank you. And I just think the presentation is just very professional, and I really want to compliment everybody that worked on putting this together. I think it looks really good. I would like, personally, I would like to get a hard copy done, because I'm better, I've tried to read it on my text or my tablet. But if I could get a hard copy sometime, I would really appreciate it before, sometime before the next May 22nd or whatever. Thank you.
Um, yeah, Gabe said it great, but then there's also still a lot of work that's going to overlap, especially on our, and the planning and zoning commission on the decisions that we make and how we can take this plan and our work and what comes in. You and I have not met.
Shay.
Shay? Maybe we have met. Forgive me. The names are messy. Um, Shay, what do you think?
Um, are you taking comments about the plan?
Uh, the presentation in general, the city part of the project, correct?
So I do have some technical comments, but I will try and put those in, or I'll send them over to Joel. Um, but I think some of the, what's important to keep in mind with these plans too is kind of like, um, it's an overview of, and kind of vision for our future. Um, but making sure we check in with this plan to keep us accountable. Um, so it's like, are we doing these things? Are we meeting these goals? So that we can look like that in 20 years. I did notice, so there's just a few major, major comments that I had. Uh, it looked like I was talking about the waterfront, and I think another good idea would be to revitalize the Lewis Clark, um, Center and Clearwater Landing interpretive areas. Um, I walk pretty frequently, and those are kind of worn down and fading. So I think enhancing those and improving those would be a good, if you walk by, just to kind of understand the history of Lewiston. And it just gives, um, a kind of view of the city. And also, under the arts and culture, it was lacking a little bit to me, because we do have a lot of different, um, venues that we do. Uh, so we have the Snake River Music Festival. We also have the Art Walk Downtown. Uh, we have the Lewiston Civic Theater. And we also have businesses such as Art Unquart. Um, and there's slowly other businesses as well that have kind of popped up over the years. But I thought it'd be important to mention those things that have been a part of our community for a while. And I, as I was reading the main comprehensive plan, for me, it seemed like it was, I, I was trying to set myself as like, as our audience, like if you're, if you're reading it, like I think numbers and data and graphs and kind of those visuals help. Um, so I think maybe taking some of what was in, I believe it was appendix C, maybe some of those things that overlap, such as, um, like economics, transportation, demographics, and maybe putting more of those things into the main comprehensive plan would kind of help. Some of the paragraphs were kind of long, so either condensing those or just adding in more graphics and data just for people to grasp what's going on. They might see, oh, we can refer to the appendix, but they might not actually do that. So getting in the data numbers, people taking the first glance at it. But yeah, overall, I mean, let's get just those.
Well, I'll jump on the bandwagon. Said it. Gabe said it very well, and I agree with what he said and what Shay said also. Um, and thanking everybody that was involved. I mean, it was a lot of hard work, and it's a, it's a long process. Um, but I am really interested to see how, uh, the area city impact issue, um, unfolds in the future and how we are able to deal with that.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I had a couple of thoughts. Um, going off what Gabe said as far as the level of elevation that this plan is and the oversight is, I'm kind of one of those down in the dirt, either down kind of gals. And I know that, um, big dreams are very important, big vision is very important, but if we don't get it, if we don't take action, and if we don't have, um, the mechanism to roll it forward, then it can be derailed very quickly with the change in administration or other circumstances. So, um, in general, comprehensive plans or working statements or whatever they are that are mandated by the government that we have to rewrite, um, every specific, a lot of times it's a task. It's not heartfelt. It's a task that we're meeting so that we're in compliance. Um, I would like to see in this presentation, or more specifically in the plan itself, a recap of what we accomplished in the last 20 years since that last plan was drafted in 99. What, 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 what did we target versus what did we actually wrap up? And, and we can like claim to now as far as the growth in Lewiston in the, in the timeline. Um, it's always nice to have a bread point or two to see where the money's gone, where the effort's gone, and how many people have gotten on board with it. Um, otherwise, that's very forgotten in the next generations. They don't see that it took 20 years ago, somebody thinking, hey, we've got to do this. Um, which leads me kind of to where I'm at, uh, specifically to the development of the riverfront. Um, I've seen a lot of properties come up and change hands that, in my opinion, should be targets, should be acquisition targets, not only for the city, um, but for developers. Um, and I wonder, because I've never heard of such a thing, if the city a- as a whole has a targeted list of properties, um, desirable properties, uh, that are not currently driving with that plan, but certainly would fall into what we want to work on and what we want to develop. And if so, you know, have we ever reached out? Do we work with realtors? Do they know that before they hit the market, does the city have a foot in the door? Um, and an opportunity maybe to actively take steps towards acquiring and then shifting the purpose of a, of a property? Um, as, I mean, it's one thing to incentivize companies to move out, but if a company or a private individual decides to sell, and we either don't know about it, or it's already sold for a similar purpose, um, then we've lost a window of opportunity. And, and I think that, um, from ground level, I think that we need to, I think we need to work a little harder on, um, how to make that happen. Not just incentives, but in property acquisitions and in identifying what those should be and where they're at, and who owns them, and can we lure them away and out of it? And then grab it. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, which I don't think we can mitigate in any way, shape, or form, is the railway storage. The very first picture of this presentation shows the overview from hanging over the top of the confluence down towards Lewiston, and what you see is the entire line of railway cars just stored. And as you drive down Main Street and you look to the left, it's nothing but targeted railway cars. And I don't think that the city has any influence over the railway company about their car storage. And to me, that's an eyesore. And, uh, can't develop what we can't see. So, uh, I think that we have a lot of things that we need to do, and I'd like to see not just what we've accomplished in the last 20 years and what we hope to accomplish in the next 20, but maybe give a little bit of a roadmap to the, um, the, the members and the generations in the city, individuals who contribute their time and energies and care about Lewiston, to roll it forward and pedal the road. So that's, um, input. Thank you. Are you, Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mayor Charkis. I was hoping you'd really tell us what, how you feel.
Have we just met?
Um, so I'm going to ask if I can put the students on the spot for a minute, because we are all interested in you. And so, um, would you mind just sharing with us maybe what you're studying and why you're here tonight? Just, I want to know. We're talking about the future and things like that. And, um, I'd just be curious. So would you be so kind as to just do that? And I'll ask Dr. Hoffman to give you an extra point or two. Would you mind standing and just doing that? We're, we're pretty easy crowd.
You're on film. It's extra credit.
It's proof.
I'm here because I asked you.
I am here because Hoffman asked. It looked interesting, so I decided. It was interesting, very much so.
Thank you.
But I also thought it'd be interesting.
This is where the rubber meets the road, you know? And you're planning and zoning commission, which are the folks on this end. I have to tell you, I think they really do the yeoman's work for the city. Um, you guys carry a heavy load. You do a great job. You do. I know you do, so I can readily admit that. Counselor President Clever.
Well, I've got, you know, several thoughts on this. Um, and agreeing with some of the comments made by the P and Z. The waterfront plan, it took quite a few years. I mean, it was, it goes back to when I was on the planning and zoning commission. It was a long time ago. And, uh, finally came up with a document that I think is, uh, appropriate. Um, the fact of the matter is, the city of Lewiston, since it was founded, has treated the waterfront property like crap. It's been industrial use for years. Do you agree, Joel? I mean, that's just, that's what it was. Um, you, you go to any other area inland northwest where's the most valuable retail, real estate, or residential real estate located in those cities? It's on the waterfront. So I would like to see some things changed on there. Problem is that we're kind of constricted by the levee system, you know, on both sides of the river. And of course, the north side is pretty heavily industrial, so. Um, I was also involved with the redrawing of the boundary of the area city impact. I'm glad people have brought that up. I think at the time, the city, we kind of gave, we kind of gave ground up to the county. You know, it, it just changed the boundaries, shrinking it down. And the fact of the matter is that the growth that's happening on the east orchards, there's the northeast orchards, now southeast orchards, if you will, is impacting the city. Impacting the city, you know, through the road department. I mean, those people. I mean, those people, they don't want to pay city taxes, but by golly, they just live out there in 23rd Street, so they get to enjoy our streetlights and drive down our pothole ridden Powers Avenue, which is what it's turned into because they pay no impact fees. Mr. Young, who built the Northwest Crossing out there off of Warner and the fishing game, and that's a single him out, but he's, and he's not part of it, they paid development fees to go into a fund to help alleviate the impact that those developments have on city streets. So I don't know how you get that, that ground put back into area city impact. I don't know that we have that much influence over development out there, but I do, I do know that we approved a zone change annexation and what was the third thing?
Comprehensive.
No, comprehensive plan amendment for Mr. Greco out there at 23rd and Powers. So hopefully that's going to start working to help the people, you know, that live out there. I mean, that, it, it, this is a serious deal. Our street budget isn't that great. You know, we do what we can to fix our streets. When you start adding X number of vehicle trips per day, it increases the wear and tear on the pavement and stuff like that, so. And Gabe, appreciate your comment about the 40,000 foot, at least 40,000 feet. You can't, when you're looking at, we're looking at a 20-year window, you know, at the minimum with this, with this new plan, you got to look at it from way up here. You can't sit there and say, hey, I don't like what they're doing with that park down here, or, you know, it's, it's the big picture. Where are we going to be, you know, in, in 2044? So hopefully this is going to help guide us to the future and bring some good decisions as far as where we're going to do improvements and where we need to exert some influence. I'm good.
You're good? Well, that's fateful, isn't it? I guess I'm all right. Joel, I get a little lost in some of this. Okay. Priorities. There's priorities within the subgroups, correct? Is there an overall priority?
So the structure is the vision, then the themes, and then the goals and the objectives in all the different chapters, which cover different aspects of community development. And then underneath those are the action items. And the action items, like Joe said, are broken out by, in general terms, of priority. So it's in the, it's in the action plan, which is the Appendix A, but those are not prioritized amongst themselves.
Correct.
So that's where we need to take the deep dive and go through all those action items and start prioritizing, you know, determining how much each one's going to take, how much effort, funding if any, you know, depending on what the thing is, and prioritizing and then start working on them on a yearly basis.
And weighting them. I mean, I think that within the subgroups, that's great, but I think there should be an overall priority weighting, weighting as in weight, way to figure out which part of all of this we're going to really start focusing on, even though we're going to do other things at the same time. There needs to be a central focus and that central focus will work out, but you still have other things going on. Is that a possibility?
Yeah. So the council and the commission can hopefully come to a consensus on whether or not you would like to do it that way, but just as an example, if the commission decided that the one thing, the main theme that should be the first priority to start working on was housing, then you go through the plan and identify all the things related to housing and then prioritize those and start working on just the housing pieces. There is, there is a way to do it.
I would like to see that and I would like to see it implemented to where we're not just focusing on one priority, but have it different weights of priorities to where we could work on more than one thing moving forward, or we'll never make it there. But overall, this is a great, it certainly is an improvement over the 1999 comprehensive plan, which when I first got a hold of that, I thought that was, that was every, it said and did all. You couldn't change it, it was in, you know, it was everything. And then I slowly learned that wasn't how it was. But so this is, this, this gives you so much more ability to see what your actions will be doing and could be doing. And I, I, I think it was a great way to, to put this together. The priority thing is just my priority. I'm done.
Okay. My turn. I think like any smart, well-rounded organization, they have a vision, right, of what they want to see. And I think that this is our starting point. And I think it's good that we have a vision for the city so that way, as she said, that we are, we are staying on track. We have something to look back and say, are we on track? We're going to get bored. And so I think this will help us get there. I, I definitely would agree with Counselor Schroeder that having, and what are we going to focus on so that the citizens can see that we're not just putting a piece of paper that we're saying, yeah, this is the vision, but we're not making track on it, but that we're actually making movement and they're seeing it happening, as you said, tackling it year by year. I think that'd be awesome. So they're, they're seeing the movement happening. It's not like all of a sudden they'll see 2044 and it's like, what have we accomplished? So making sure we're really attacking that because although 2044 seems forever away, I feel like it'd probably be here before we know it. And so, yeah. So staying on that is important, that we really are treating this seriously, especially with everything in the, with everything, it costs money, even putting this together costs money, so let's put this money to work. I also would agree that I think it'd be great to see how far we've come from the previous one, because that gets to, kind of puts it in perspective, right, that the city has been working on stuff, we are constantly working on stuff. You know, we used to live in the stone ages and here we are going into the, not really stone ages, but here we are going into the future. And so I think it's good to see that and, and for the citizens to be able to see how far we've come. I know just talking to my father-in-law and you talking about, well, back in my day, that business wasn't even there and that was a piece of dirt. And so it's, it's really cool to be able to get that, that visual of that. And so I'm excited to see this come to fruition. I've been to a lot of cities where the riverfront is the destination to be. You're there, people are hanging out, there's restaurants there, hotels nearby, you got a view of the river from your hotel room and, and they really capitalize on that. So I think that us to be able to get a hold of that and capitalize on that is really going to bring people wanting to come here and more, having more tourism and which will then give us more money to be able to spend here in the, in the valley. So I hope that we can make that happen because I think everybody likes to be able to walk by the river and enjoy the, the birds and just see the, the serenity of it. And so, yeah, I think this is really awesome and I hope that we can continue and make it happen. So appreciate you guys putting the time into this and dedicating time from your families and lives to make sure that we're treating this seriously.
Counselor Kleiner, do you have any comments to share?
I don't right now. Everybody seems to have any good ideas and opinions about.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, next item, Mayor, Mayor comments. I'll share a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank our students for being here tonight. I think that's really neat. Just a couple of thoughts, and these are not late additions, they're not criticisms, but as I think about future land use map and the growth of the city and things that are going on, I, I wrote down a couple of thoughts here. One of them is the Port of Lewiston. And I think the port should really be viewed as a partner in any kind of long-term planning that we do because the Port District is actually the entire county. It's not just the land on the north side of the river. And they could play a key role, I think, in development of our waterways and our waterfront properties. Yes, we have to deal with the Corps of Engineers, but the Port District has additional authorities that we don't have as a city that could help us maybe bring some of that development along. So that might be worth keeping in mind. I don't know if Joe still with this, looks like he is. Comment about the property acquisition, it's a very good comment and something that I hope that the council does more of, but not only acquisition, but disposal. So we have properties in town today that we can look at disposal that would help contribute, I think, to infilling the neighborhoods as this plan envisioned. So when we talk about neighborhood commercial, community commercial, stuff like that, I, I'll give you one example, and there's not a lot of support for it right now, but I think it's a good idea. And that is to look at surplusing that ground along Southway Avenue in front of the cemetery because I'm not sure where we're going to make it there in the next 150 years, but it's a great place to do some infill there with not our community commercial, but the neighborhood commercials, which is a step down from that, which would allow like professional offices, services to come in and it, it makes those neighborhoods walkable. They don't have to go to the orchards or somewhere else for, you know, could be dental, could be legal help, accounting, anything like that. So I think we have those opportunities where we can dispose of some grounds, but also maybe acquire them. And in fact, as we're sitting here and I was texting away, I was sending a lead to somebody on a piece of ground in North Lewiston. So always working the phones here, but I got some information right before this meeting. Then also, you know, for what are efforts worth, Joel? You know, in, in our public works department, we talk about that someday we may be going over the hill and down to Tammany with our wastewater, you know? And so we have a couple of projects right now where I think we're finding out that there's going to be some challenges for the property owner and what they thought they had doesn't exist, you know, these kind of things. But as we develop out by the rodeo grounds, we develop south of the airport, all the way around, south toward all that's going on, at some point it's going to make sense to go down the hill with this stuff and gravity feed it down the Snake River and overturn that. And as we do that, even though it's outside of our city boundary and it's not currently identified in the area of city impact here on this map, this future land use map, I think anything between Tammany Creek and the city boundary today is probably going to play into some of our future decisions on what we do. So those are my three comments to share. Then we have a test question. The students didn't know this, but what was the first capital of Lewiston, of Idaho? Whoops.
She'd ask him what happened.
Could I say a four-letter word? Fudge, no, there was not. Lewiston, you probably knew that, right? First capital of Idaho. They were, they went duck hunting. The governor went duck hunting and they came up and stole our seal.
True story.
She asked a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She said, did he quite literally steal the capital?
Stole the seal. The state seal of Idaho, yeah.
Ever be a burn in the Lewiston's souls.
People conveniently went on a duck hunt or some kind of a hunting trip, you know, so that it could happen.
The hunt for the capitals, what they did say.
Yeah, it was a bad deal. We're trying to get it back here, so anyway.
Mayor? I didn't know we had to have three points. Mine was only one, so do I get two more?
You can, you can offer two more points, yes.
Okay. I loved planning and zoning. It was the greatest experience I've ever had and I had five years of it at the end. It was great, so I really appreciate what you do. I do know a little bit about what you do and I really appreciate it. 1863, you started on this and you didn't finish it. 1863, when the first paddle wheelers came up the river, they tied up on the Twin City Foods property. And that was when commerce started in Lewiston, 1863. Now that property, yes, is maybe has been abused, but it's still, it's still a very, very, very important part of, or can be a very important part of our economy and we need to look at it for that reason historically and relevantly. Did I get three? Or did I only get two?
That's four.
Well, that's a...
Well, I think it's two plus one, so I think it was three.
So anyway, just to give you a history lesson. And so you were listening to that, right? 1863, don't forget. Oh, and the first city council meeting, which is very interesting, first time they had a city council meeting? Do you know what the topic was?
Garbage.
Yes. Clean up the city. Too much garbage.
How did I know that?
Don't, don't tell anybody that. What year? 1863?
1863 was the first council meeting?
Yes.
It was still talking garbage a hundred and something years ago.
Yeah, I know. Cleaning up the community, that's, we're always talking about that. So anyway, I'm, I'm done. So Mr. Mayor, I have a question about, we talked about impact, area of impact. How is that decided? Because I thought it was just within a certain amount of area from the city boundary and it doesn't sound like it's done that way. I thought it was a mile from here down to the city.
That has changed over the years so much, but Joel was just giving us an update.
It's not, it's not a set just, it's a very broad, it's just a very broad ambiguous criteria. And it's, again, that's changed in the new state code, so we'll have to revisit that.
So is that revisited every year or is it revisited at a set time?
Under the new law, it's supposed to be every five years.
Gotcha, okay.
It's a lot of changes coming.
If I can do a really quick follow-up, last week or two weeks ago, I stumbled across a video of a realtor, a young man out of Coeur d'Alene. And apparently one of his buddies invited him to come down to Lewiston where he filmed the entire thing and put it on YouTube. Oh, I watched that. So the gentleman in question, as he walked around, I think there was a line in there where he was like, does, do the citizens of Lewiston have any merit or? And then he kind of segues off and what he, his overview was that Lewiston is a visiting era gone well by. We're about 20 years behind what we should be. We're not very bright and shiny. We've got a lot of dilapidated properties, you know, but gosh, those people are sure chatty. So I think that Lewiston can certainly do better, but it was interesting that somebody who in the coming generations believes what they know what a city is supposed to look like, and we don't, we don't jive with that. We don't have the skyscrapers, the high rises, the shiny things. We have friendly people, aside from our political aspirations and views, apparently. It was an interesting perspective and I know it was just one person's, but yeah, I'd sure like to see us be a destination and not just for the aging that want to live in the forest.
Counselor Klebert, if I may, just to follow up real briefly. I remember when I first came out here to go to school up at Idaho, back in 78, we were playing soccer up at North Idaho College. And we stayed at a house that was kind of down there along the lake. And if you looked at it back then, again, kind of getting back to my point about what we tend to our riverfront, that place was a friggin' dump. I mean, you had Simpson Mill, there was Kriessault leaking the river, heading straight down to the dam that Vista built. And here we are, 40 years later, 35 years later. Look there and take a look at it now. I mean, that's what I like to see.
I'll, I'll piggyback on what Cynthia has said that, and, and...
and as somebody who has, who lived in Coeur d'Alene for several years, and I think what a lot of people kind of forget when they compare, say, one city to another or one area to another, is we as people really like to focus on that one thing and be like, that was the reason why it happened. But I think we tend to forget what the catalyst, what I call a catalyst, is for actual change. So for Coeur d'Alene, for example, it was Hagado and investing millions and millions of dollars. Now, I am not saying that they haven't done other stuff in Coeur d'Alene, because this changed completely since I lived there 15 years ago. But all the things that went into that before that, you can call it random chance or luck or whatever, that somebody came in and spent millions of dollars building up that resort, and then all the waterfront and downtown development that came after that. But there were things and mechanisms that were put in place to lure him to develop down there. So sometimes it's blind luck. Sometimes it is just random chance. Sometimes it's the processes that have taken place to get that person to put that initial investment in. And that's kind of what I view this plan as hopefully leading towards.
Well, I'd like to go on record, so I don't want to become Coeur d'Alene.
Yeah, no, I agree. I do agree.
I always have hives when I have to drive amongst all those people. But I will say, I think that we have a lot of room and opportunity for improvement.
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion adjourned. Okay. I think, you know, you said the word destination. And I was a travel agent for 24 years, 25, I don't know. Lewiston was never a destination. Now, the cruise boats came up, and I wasn't paying attention. I just moved into Normal Hill in a big house that required a ton of work. And so I wasn't paying attention. And a historian came to the house and said, Kathy, we need to have somebody open their house. It's a historic home. Today, it's 118 years old. But to open their house to a historic home? And I'm going, what are you talking about? And he said, well, the cruise lines are here, and they travel with a bus. I said, you mean, we're like New York? We actually have hop-on, hop-off buses? And yes, we do. So today, we are a destination. But we want to really build on that. We want that waterfront to be the best thing for them to come up the river for.
I chased two of the buses up the hill this morning.
Oh, did you really? Good girl. No, it's been great having them here, and we had over 9,000 people come through our home in a five-year period. It was amazing.
Counselor Porshman.
With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right.
All right. Counselor Porshman, I think Counselor Schroder should adjourn. Those are favor three segment, I would say.
Aye.
Oh, sweet. And adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.